So, zoning board of appeals Tuesday, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Start with new business. Arthur Bellerive, zero Stevens Park Road.
We're hoping up and let the others go ahead of us.
You're you're waiting for your engineer?
I'm waiting.
You're waiting for the engineer, Arthur?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll just move on to the next one then. Justin Rebecca Raymond, thirty-four Hill Road in Charlton. Of course, it's in Charlton. Is anybody here for them?
Moving on.
Nobody? Josh Forte, forty-three Cranberry Meadow Shore Road?
Before we get started, I have some updated plans.
Uh, you wanna just just state your name for the record first, please?
Oh, yeah, my name is Josh Forte, forty-three Cranberry Meadow Shore Road.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
They're just they're just updated, they show elevations from the outside, I don't know if that helps.
I'll take anything you have.
Okay.
Um, you wanna just tell us first, um, what you're planning to do? Why this board should grant you relief and where the hardships are?
Thanks, man. Yeah, so I'm trying to put a deck on the house.
Okay.
And, uh, a deck and a breezeway, I'm looking to do some renovations inside the house. But, um, you know, I'm trying to make this my forever home, take it from a summer camp, kind of seasonal place to a real house.
Okay.
Good.
The hardships are for me is, uh, you know, I got a ton of money invested in these plans and I don't wanna keep going any further with them. You know, with without the okay to put a deck on it because if I can't put, you know, extend past the house towards the lake, then I would have to consider maybe, you know, moving some living space to be able to incorporate a deck going backwards. So, that's kinda where I'm at.
So what's there right now?
Nothing.
All right, and so typically the hardship is not the fact that you did the plan, I mean, that was your option to do that. So there has to be something to the property, uh, shape, topography, that you couldn't do what you're proposing any other way.
Yeah, I I have no other options because of the the property size, because of the topography. I mean, yeah, that stuff's in the pamphlet I pulled up, but yeah, I'm kinda stuck, I mean, it's not a very big piece of property.
How long did you buy this property?
Uh, this is gonna be my seventh year.
Okay.
So I've had it for a little while.
So when you bought it, was it like it is right now?
Yeah.
All right, so it looks like that 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 back portion of the property was almost like a deck at one point and someone finished it off.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, is that is that i- is it a full C four season property right now? Are you living in it?
Uh, yeah, I'm living in it, yeah, I mean, it's not the most efficient house at all, but, yeah, I mean, it, yeah.
So you're not gonna go any?
So, yeah, I'm not going, go ahead.
Park that's facing the water right now, the basement, is that open or is that in all enclosed as well?
That is enclosed. It's, uh, yeah, three season.
So the setback is supposed to be thirty feet.
About fifteen.
Well, off off the water.
Off the water.
Supposed to be, yeah. I I didn't just say no, I've gone to conservation already and they approved it.
Okay.
They were okay with everything, it was just, I'm just waiting to get the paperwork in for coming tonight.
So you're looking for about a foot on the side setbacks?
Roughly, actually, I think it was a little more than that, wasn't it?
A little bit more on the north side.
Cause I think it's showing like I have sixteen on one side, I'm asking for three point five. Um, one side was like I have nine and I'm asking for
Six.
Six, I'm just trying to remember in my head while I'm looking this up. And then the front, I'm asking for what, four in three inches? What am I asking for? Yeah.
So what part of the what part of the front that we you're the the property already exists in the front?
Front being the lakeside, right?
That would be the rear.
That would be the rear.
Yeah.
On a lit- yeah, okay, so on
Street side.
Okay. So, uh, the so the the front being the street side, you're asking what now?
You're not asking anything for the front, cause that's already existing, you're not gonna be, you're not gonna be in the front setback at all.
No, cause that's existing tight tank. And, uh, I can't, yeah, I'm not going anywhere. Not going that direction at all.
So in the front, there's a tight tank in the front.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's a somewhere, I should have attached a picture of an engineer drawing showing that. Yeah, it's the last, no, it's not the last page. But yeah, it's a tight tank, it was put in in two thousand fifteen. Green Hill Engineering did the, uh-
How much is a of the drop is it between the 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 road and and, um, in in the, is that a retaining wall by the at the, uh, where you're looking at, how much of a drop is it?
I don't, yeah, see, I don't thi- I don't have the same pictures you have.
This is what you just gave me.
Oh, oh, the plan, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so this looks like a set of stairs and a retaining wall.
Yeah, this is set of stairs, okay, so from, yep, say that again, driveway grade?
From the driveway grade to where that that set of stairs is where the drop is, how how much of a drop is it, you think?
The driveway grade is about three feet down to a walkway. And then it goes and then it drops down s- uh, two sets of stairs, there's a three sets and then it drops down like five or six step.
So how many feet do you think that is, ten feet?
Maybe, yeah.
All right.
Might be a little more.
You guys have any questions?
All right.
No, I mean, a- anywhere you wanna build a deck on this house is gonna need a variance, no matter what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The whole house is looking at setback.
Yeah, he's got the setback here and you can see it.
All right.
I mean, it, yeah, I don't I don't know whether what other options I have, I mean, I'm kind of like, you know, trying to figure this out and stuck.
All right. Um, any more questions at this time? You guys have another questions?
No.
All right. Uh, so let's, um, let's call any members of the public, abouters or anything, have any comments or questions? I will call the normal boards, selectmen, treasurers, assessors, border health, uh, zoning enforcement slash building inspector's office.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Messus.
If I may, pass these out to the board and the applicant?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Makes it a lot easier when you're seeing these pictures and posting the plan.
That's why I came.
I know.
Um, this property is similarly located to other properties along the Cranberry Meadow Shore Road, they're small lots, um, typical of that neighborhood. On the first page, you see the, uh, GIS overview of the property. Um, the ortho or the picture and the actual house, you know, because these are GISs are definitely skewed based on engineering data that the applicant has provided. Um, the first picture on the bottom is a a photo from the lakeside of the house. Uh, the next page shows forty-one Cranberry Meadow Shore next to the forty-three Cranberry Meadow Shore, the subject property. Um, the lower photo there is looking along the side of the property where the, um, walkway is intended to go. Um, it is apparent that, um, there was some sort of addition put on the lakeside of the house, the house is a gable uh, style house and the lakeside portion is some sort of shed, you know, pro- potentially possibly had been an open porch at one time, but um, no records to reflect that. Um, looking on the next page, um, along the side of the house towards the lake, um, the property does slope down and is terraced by retaining walls at various intervals, probably, um, as you can see, between three and five feet tall depending upon them in the lower the lower photo there. Um, and I'm standing on the gentleman's dock showing you a picture of forty-one Cranberry Meadow Shore that has a a lakefront, um, porch on it. And the next house beyond thirty-seven Cranberry Meadow Shore also has a, uh, lakefront a porch on it, rather typical to the neighborhood when those were permitted or whatever, I I didn't research, they exist. Um, forty-seven Cranberry is the house to the right of the subject property and forty-four Cranberry Meadow Shore is across the street, one of the larger lots in the neighborhood. If I could refer to the site plan that the applicant provided, it's an interesting property in a way because the surveyor shows that it's twenty-three fi- foot five to the proposed deck and twenty-eight seven to the water line. However, the property doesn't extend to the water line. Um, and the required setback, um, in this zone is thirty feet from the high water mark. It would also be thirty feet from the property line, this is an A zone. Don't don't know what to say about that, you know, it it's a, it's like, okay, should we be, should he be asking for relief of six and a half feet from the property line or should be asking for relief of one point three from the edge of the pond, I think I would go with the property line that being the more restrictive of the two if if he were to grant the variance.
That's what he's put in his application.
Okay. I I just found, and we do see this from time to time on the on the maps, whether the lake got bigger or not, or it got smaller, I really don't know. Um, and then you can see along the side that he's looking to put a a walkway along the side there. Um, and it's shown is three foot five wide and it's probably, you know, two two-ish feet into offending the setback. That's what I have, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your help. Just a question for you, you are you moving the propane tanks? If you put the walkway there, it's gonna be rough against the house or is it gonna be, the propane tanks are gonna be in between?
No, 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 the propane tanks are going to the other side of the house.
Okay.
So the the that walkway is gonna be right up on the house.
Right up on the house and then it's gonna go right to the deck in the back?
Yeah.
And it's a ten-foot deck in the back?
Yeah, cause, yeah, I, well, yeah, cause we're trying to keep it close to the thirty-foot, but they want thirty-foot to the water, you know what I mean, so?
Yeah.
But, yeah, we were trying to, you know, keep it small.
Okay, um, anybody from the planning board, conservation, police, fire, school department, economic development, veterans, senior center? Any of the board commission, anybody else have any comments? All right. Does anybody else have any more questions for the petitioner?
No, do not.
You wanna end this public portion of the petition?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's a second on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I have no problem with this.
Yep.
Me either. Um, you guys have any issues?
No, I mean, there's really nothing you can do when it it
I mean, it's it's in line, it's in line with the ne- the neighborhood, I mean, there's nothing, the shape of the lot, the size, I mean, it's minimal, all those camps like that.
Yeah.
Um, the question is is that whether we grant, if we're gonna grant a variance for the deck for this rear setback, i- is it to the property line or is it to the high water mark, I would prefer the property line.
Yeah, I think we
Yeah.
go to the property line.
Yeah. Eric, Marco, what do you think?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, what do you think?
What's your reasoning behind that?
Behind what, going to the property line?
Versus the high water mark.
Because we don't know, so if we know, we know where the property line is gonna be today in potentially fifty years from now, the high water mark might be something different. Um, so if we grant the variance to that, then it's at a fixed point. I mean, he's not buying anymore, I mean, unless he buys the land underneath the lake or something, uh, I think it it's it seems more consistent in my mind.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a, uh, maybe we can add something?
I don't know.
Thought I saw one of these plans.
I thought, yeah.
From from the high water mark to the property?
Yeah, we're not, we're gonna do it from the property line, not from the high water.
Right, I think, oh, so you're you're asking about that distances?
Yeah. Yeah, I need dis- yeah.
Is that what you have in here, it's six foot six?
That's what I got, six and a half.
Six and a half?
Yeah. We can just go with what he's got on the app.
Yeah, and if you want it, this is submitted to the plan too, if someone makes a motion on this, so it's gonna be a ten-foot deck with that three and a half foot walkway on the side. And then, um, and then the the walkways on the southerly side of the property. And, um, and then the hardship would be the the topography obviously is is a factor in the shape and size of the water is a factor as well. Does anyone make a motion on this? Anybody?
Yeah, let me grab this, uh, page here with the numbers. All right. Motion to grant the variance per the applicant's request, north side, five foot nine inches, south side, two foot six inches for side yard setback relief. Also, rear yard setback relief, six foot six inch, six inches from the property line, not from the high water mark. Also, uh, motion to grant a variance to alter and extend the existing, uh, pre-existing non-conformance. Um, hardships being the size and shape of the lot and, uh, the topography.
Second.
There's a second on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, um, there's a twenty-day appeal period from when, um, Mary submitted to the town clerk.
Okay.
So Mary will submit it to the town clerk, after the twenty days is up, you're gonna come in, you're gonna get the variance and, um, you're gonna record the whole thing at the registry of deeds. So if it's five pages, you're gonna record, they only take charge of the same price, no matter how many pages they have.
Okay.
So, um, you wanna record the whole thing, once you have that, you talk to Cart and, uh, he'll take you from there.
Okay.
All right?
Perfect, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Enjoy the deck next summer.
All right.
Thanks.
All right.
We're going back to first?
I have no idea. All right, so, Mr. Bellerive, do you have your engineer here?
Yeah.
So we're gonna call Arthur Bellerive, uh, Stevens Park Road, also in Charlton. What a coincidence.
It's good. Larry.
I'd like to see that applicability.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna start taking out other towns. We meet in every week.
Um, so, um, could both of you state your name for the record, please?
Sure, Margaret Bacon, I'm the engineer with civil site engineering.
Fantastic.
Arthur Bellerive, Charles.
So if you could, uh, I'm pronouncing your name incorrectly, I apologize for that. Um, so, um, if you could, uh, present to us, uh, what you're asking for, the reason why the board should grant relief on it.
Sure. Um, I have a plan right here, do you want me to just lift that up?
If you'd like to, whatever you'd like to show us, we'll look at.
Okay. Okay, so basically, um, uh, the Bellerives owns this nine-acre parcel that's off of Stevens Park Row.
Okay.
Uh, and through the special permit process this summer, he was granted a, uh, a reduced frontage lot.
Okay.
He has fifty feet of frontage right here, okay?
Is that that small lot that's right next to the nine acres?
Yes, right here.
Yeah.
That that's Arthur's frontage to this larger parcel.
Okay. So on the GIS map that shows just like a small lot that's next to the the house that's in an angle there, right?
It's all joined together.
It's all joined together, okay.
So, uh, so we were granted a a reduced frontage lot.
Okay.
So the reduced frontage lot requirements, you have to have, uh, from the, uh, the, uh, the end, the at the frontage there, your your house has to be set two hundred feet back. And so here's that two hundred foot offset.
Okay.
So we're re- asking relief from that two hundred foot offset. Okay, cause Arthur would like to to put the house here, the type of house he has is a is a ranch with a with a walkout basement and he'd like the walkout basement to face the lake. Uh, and also, there's a, there's a, it's not a, uh, an official right-of-way or easement that goes to the spillway right here.
Right.
So, uh, Mr. Bellerive is in negotiations with the, uh, the town manager regarding providing permanent access to the town to access this spillway.
Okay.
Because right now it's not an official easement.
Okay.
And and, uh, another reason, we don't wanna put the house over here, he doesn't want that, if we do, it does make a, uh, negotiate with the town, have that easement between the house and the lake. And then the the other, you know, the other hardships are to build the house, cause this all slopes up, you know, it's an upward slope.
Right.
And and he wouldn't be able to build the house he wanted on this side of that easement. Proposed easement, which is proposed.
So, right now, he's got maybe like a little deck house right on the lake.
Correct.
Are are you proposing to put the house where the RV is sitting right now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then you wanna put, so right now, when you come to the end of that road, I does does, I I only, I stopped where 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 the, um, with the, pretty much with the RV is, I didn't know, I I didn't, I didn't want to go further. Does that road continue to the spillway right now?
No, uh,
So that just ends?
Well, it has it has to come through my property.
Right.
And not to come up to the the spillway.
Right, but there's no-
But it has to cross, it has to cross, um, if they had an easement, like two or three other properties, plus mine, to go.
Oh, so you're you're not, you're not right next to the spillway?
Yes, I am.
Oh.
But the road, the road itself, in fact, it, I think it's questionable where the road ends.
Yeah, it's kind of odd ending there, I mean, without questioning.
In fact, it, I think it, at this point, I think it ends right past where, um, my driveway will be now.
Yeah.
Just beyond that. The sewer line is there as well, so.
So, so you you can't continue straight on, that won't go to the spillway then?
No, right, right here?
Yeah.
Uh, no, so, uh, he's going to build a, there's an existing gravel, uh, drive right here that he's going to, uh, improve and that will be his access to the house.
So the, so, I mean, you're going uphill on that back of it, there's a, there's a, a good berm on the back end where that's gonna be, is is, are they, are you grading that out or are you gonna have the town grade that out?
Yeah, we're grading that out.
You're gonna take care of that when you build the house?
Right.
Okay. You don't talking about, it kind of slopes up pretty steep?
Sure.
And then it goes?
Yeah, cause we already designed a a sewer to come down that that driveway and to connect into the existing sewer here.
Right, right.
So, yeah, there is gonna be some grading involved.
Yeah, sewer is actually right, that par- partial that I bought, that fifty feet, the sewer is right there.
Okay, so you're tying into the town?
You're tying it into sewer, that's gravity right to that line.
You don't wanna, you can't build it any further back on that nine acres?
No. You know, all the setbacks here on a normal lot, I exceed all the, all the setbacks.
So if you were to put that in the spot that you're proposing, you don't need any other relief, just the two hundred feet for the buffer on the on the reduced frontage lot, that's the only thing that you would need?
That's the only, the only thing is the two hundred feet. And why, I don't know, Kurt could probably add.
Well, the one other question I have is, why would you wanna put that easement road right behind the house? Like, you, um, I mean, granted, they're not gonna use it all that much hopefully, but you know?
Well, the reason for that is to go over here, you're crossing over other people's property. But-
Oh, if you were gonna go the other way?
Yeah. This way here is direct.
So their acci- their acci- so the easement road is gonna access the frontage that you got the reduced frontage lot and then travel behind that way, so you're not accessing anybody else's property, or is there like two other houses over there?
It, uh, well, it's one other house and one other property that, uh, it's just there, no, nothing on it.
Okay.
Oh, no, no.
So the other, a question I have is, is that there's a little structure that's close to the water, that's yours as well right now?
Yeah, yeah.
What is, is that, that's not a?
That's a p- uh, pavilion, vote for pavilion for the lake.
So it's just like a little
Yeah.
shed that you can sit on?
Actually, that was on, uh, this portion of it, little quarter acre lot.
Yeah.
Was was separate from the thirty-six acres and I I had put them all together.
Okay. So then no one sleeps in that?
No, no.
Okay. So if we make a condition that it's not gonna be a habit of that?
Yeah, that's not just a-
Well, it's happened, you know, to some of the lakes in the town that
Yeah.
you know, they had that and the next thing you know, there's, you know, they got a septic system, people are sleeping in it, so.
Yeah, no, there's no septic system there.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. They probably, they got a permit for, uh, like a little, you know, like shed to put right by, you know, in the dock on a pond or a lake or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, for the summertime and the next thing you know, they're, you know, getting a perk test and, you know, they're putting a septic system in and they're just sleeping in this small thing. I mean, granted, it's nice to be on the lake like that, but still, um, yeah, do you guys have any questions?
Um, I mean, do we wanna talk with water department and about waiting, do they wanna wait till this easement gets ironed out before we approve this variance?
What, do you know where is the the easement process right now?
Well, I I guess part of the process right now is, uh, the zoning board, you want, uh, Art wants to make sure that he will get relief from that and then if if that i- is approved here, then he he's already in talking to the town and actually, I was talking to the, uh, the dam engineer before I came here and he's all, they're all set, ready to turn that into a permanent easement with the town. So the conversation, discussions are already taking place. It's just that, uh, uh, Art doesn't wanna have that easement between his house and the lake and, you know, blame him, so.
Yeah.
Actually, here's the goal, this is the third, uh, town manager that I talked to to get a legal, because this because the town doesn't have any legal right of way.
He can't access it from the other side?
Yeah, the access is from the other side, the controls are on this side.
Oh, really? So the access-
Actually, it's best that it, it didn't go through before, the other two didn't take advantage of it. It, advantage now is, the only person they have to deal with is me, and not the other easements. And I'm more than willing to work with them, I've been trying to work with them for many years, actually.
When are you planning to build?
When?
Yeah.
Yesterday.
Will you, will you try to break ground before the end of this year?
Yeah, I'd like to get the foundation in.
Okay. All right, does anyone else have any questions right now?
Is that easement going to be your driveway also?
Yes.
So that'll be your access to the house?
It could be an extension from my driveway.
Parker, you have any questions? All right, want to hear from the Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I have some documents that I'm passing out.
Oh, I see what you're doing, that makes a lot more sense.
What?
Oh, I was wondering if that, I didn't have that in mind.
Oh, yeah, this is a little bit easier to see than this smaller one.
Yeah.
All right, as usual, we start with the locust map, GIS plot, this GIS plot, the boundaries of the most recent divisions of the property have not been incorporated, so there is a new property line sort of running north-south on the page. It doesn't materially affect the discussion that we're having. Currently, as you noted, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bellaree, for a number of years, has had a travel home on the property, shown on the next two pages, and has a gently sloping lot that goes uphill that has a very nice view of the lake. I did not, you know, climb up the hill to take a picture, but I was standing nearby the trailer or the camper home, and you can see down the lake, and you can see the cooling cottage, whatever you want to call it, that is not improved with the septic system, has a small deck on it down near the lake, and, you know, offends the setbacks a little bit, but it's been there longer than I've known about. The next picture is the proposed driveway, I think, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, there's quite a berm there, it's a little bit before what looks like to be the end of the road, and as Mr. Bellaree has described, that road is one of the more interesting roads in town. It's not a town-accepted road, but it is a way that has been used for years. And there are several other properties further towards City Depot Road that cross the way. So there is no clear definitive layout of that way from one end to the other. You can see ninety-two Stevens Park, which is a little bit beyond, but near the, the end of the paved area, and eighty-eight Stevens Park there, and then seventy-one Stevens Park, which is downhill of it. I did provide a blow-up of the submittal, the purple line on the blow-up indicates the property line. He does gain his fifty feet of frontage in that section there that juts out over the private right of way. The engineer here has shown a two-hundred-foot setback and shown the proposed house. Mr. Bellaree has been talking to me about this project, I think as long as I've been a building inspector, which is twenty years. I have agita over this. If it was a small lot along the lake, you know, similar to other lots in the area, I would not have any agita over it. But when a special permit reduced frontage lot was created that's over five acres in size, and someone's asking for relief because they'd really like their house to be there, as opposed to be up the hill, meet the conformance, and still be able to see the lake, it gives me pause. And that's all I have to say.
Okay.
I have a question for you, but-
No, direct it to the board, please.
Yeah. Through the chairman?
Yeah.
Kurt, why is the-
No, all right, if you just ask us, that would be great. If you could ask the board what you're gonna ask.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask Kurt, why the two-hundred-feet setback? Why is it required?
It's whatever the town voted in.
I know, but there has to be a reason why.
I, I don't know, I mean, we probably, if-
The zoning person may know.
If, it depends if it was in the original bylaw when they passed it in the nineteen eighties, it could have been amendment at some point between that point and today. I don't remember, I mean, I've only been in town for twenty years, I don't remember this being on a ballot at any, you know, at a town meeting at any point. So my guess is it's been here for a while. Yeah, I, I couldn't answer that question, I don't know if Kurt, do you know the reason? Is it, was it an amendment to the town, to the bylaw at some point, do you know?
So reduced frontage lots were not in the original nineteen eighty-seven bylaw.
Yeah.
They were, they came in under a zoning amendment.
Yeah.
Ten-ish, maybe more years ago.
Was it ten years ago?
At least.
Yeah.
And their purpose, sometimes they're called a pork chop lot or a flag lot.
Yeah.
And their purpose was to allow people with large parcels of property that didn't have sufficient frontage to create two conforming lots, a method without building a subdivision of getting another lot potentially for a family member. And the two-hundred-foot setback comes from the idea that if you had a regular lot in the front that would be a hundred, hundred-and-fifty feet deep, that the house wouldn't be directly behind the existing house.
And consequently, Mr. Chairman, that this does not apply, because-
No, but I mean, granted, you have nine acres, and you're going right up against, I mean, I understand why you'd want to be, but you look at the lot and it's a nine-acre lot, I mean. Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Did you get any comments back from the town manager?
No, I, I mean, there's a letter, there's a letter in, in our, in the petition, I don't know whether that was submitted by the, to the town administrator, or the, or it was just included in your application. But I haven't, I don't have any comment back from the administrator at all.
From any other town boards at all, any feedback?
Not, not as of right now, no. Not that I know of, Mary, we haven't got any. I mean, I, you know, depending on what the board is, I guess, depending upon how much weight it would carry, you know, in terms of zoning, you know, conservation, you know, might be important, but it doesn't impact zoning all that much.
Right, but what is important, and so I don't know if it's worth continuing this, is, you know, this easement to the dam, because there is no other way really to maintain.
No, and I understand that, and one of my things, concerns is that, if this is something that has been kind of talked about, and the petitioner was agreeing to do that, how far along is that process? You know, ultimately, I think it's more for the benefit of the town than the petitioner, you know, to have something recorded as a permanent easement, you know, to get, to get access to that side of the spillway. I don't know if that's the only way, you know, right now, to get to the controls. It's surprising they didn't do that when they, when they built the dam, for crying out loud.
They did, in fact, and talking to the dam engineer today, he said, there is no other way, because coming in through the other way, you'd have to go across the Brook and through several properties to get to it, so it's really not a feasible option.
Right, and I thought, though, correct me if I'm wrong, where, where Lemansky built those condos, you know, about fifteen years ago, was there, was there an access road from that spot back to the spillway as well?
That is the existing easement that crosses from Brookfield Road through Mr. Lemansky's property, through some other properties that is shown on the deeds. It has not been used.
Yeah.
Mr. Bellaree has been generous to the community, and the neighbors down there have been generous to the community. From my recollection is, when the dam was rebuilt, he allowed free access through there to rebuild the dam.
Right.
Mr. Bellaree has been the dam monitor for years and years and years until lately, so, you know, he's very familiar with the dam and the lake operations. And yes, it would be convenient for the town, and I have spoken to the town administrator, because all these issues come up, and that he has been working with Mr. Bellaree to get a clear deed at easement, it would be beneficial to the town to have that.
Right, right.
But I don't know that that's-
How far along that process is actually?
Well, it, it hasn't moved to town meeting in two years.
With the-
It, it hasn't been, it's been being talked about in this latest iteration.
So if he was, if he was to grant an easement back to the town for this, that doesn't require a town meeting, though?
Yes, it does.
Why would it require a town meeting?
Because the town has to approve the easement. You can't just give the town an easement without approval.
I can give anything to anybody, you know, if I want to record it.
But the-
What the town wants, that is another story.
Right, well, the town fathers are the people who execute deed agreements on behalf of the town.
Right, but he's executing a deed agreement, not the town.
Town has to accept it.
Town doesn't have to accept anything, he can just do it if he wants.
But if it isn't the town, we're not gonna use it, the town would have to accept it for the town to use it, correct? It's like accepting a road, right?
Nah, not, not so much accepting a road, because we would be taking title to the road. We wouldn't be taking title to this property. I can see, Mr. Lombardi, what you're saying is, I can grant an easement, I, you know, Mr. Bellaree could just say-
Grant the easement, right, whether the town accepts it or not is a whole other-
And whether the town uses it or not, that's-
Right, that's a whole nother story.
Interesting legal proposition there. You guys are, you guys drive me nuts.
Well, the bids have been already given out for the repair of the dam, so there's just-
Oh, does the dam need repair?
Yeah.
Oh, it does.
Yeah.
They need maintenance all the time.
Okay. I, I, do you guys have any other questions right now? Aaron?
No.
Mar, do you have any questions, comments? Eric?
No, I mean, I do see a letter in here from the town administrator, basically saying that they are in discussions for this.
They're in discussions.
For this easement, but pending the final location. Waiting for site layout to be done and approved by zoning board.
So if Mr. Bellaree is in agreement to prepare in those documents that come through, an official easement that he can present to the town, that, you know, that's showing in good faith, you know, in moving forward, but then, you know, the rest is out of his control and it's up to the town.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, do we, do we approach another town office? I mean, just say, hey, is this something that you guys are actually, like, is this important to you? Is this something that you really want? I mean, I, I get, I get why, you know, the applicant wants to put their house there, they want to get it close to the water, that's the whole point of having it, you know? And then, to Kurt's point, a two-hundred-foot setback, I mean, in this case, I see why it's not really that big of a deal, because there's not gonna be, nobody's gonna be, yeah, there's no other lots that are gonna be built on.
Where, wherever I want to put the house is not detrimental to the-
Correct.
To the neighborhood at all, in fact, it's an improvement to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
My setbacks are all greater than all of the, the whole road.
All right, so let me do this, let me call, is there any butters, members of the public, that have any comments or questions on this? Gentlemen? No? Neither of the three of you, you're all good?
Yep.
All right, anybody else? So do you want to, do you want to see if we can talk to the administrator before we move forward on this?
Yeah.
Is that something you might be interested in doing? Do you want to go out and see the property? You know, he, you know, he is asking for, I mean, essentially, he's got a nine-acre piece of property, and he's asking for like right up against the spot that, that he's doing, which might make, make a difference, it might, might not make a difference.
Yeah.
Like Mr. Meska said, is the whole idea between the reduced frontage lot was that they weren't gonna be on top of somebody else. I, I've already, I, I haven't been on the property, but I've been up the road, and I, you know, I see where his RV is right now, and if that's the spot where he wants to put the house, I, you know, obviously, I didn't go to the other part of the nine acres, I have no idea what that looks like at all. Is that something that you guys would be interested in doing? Do you want to talk, do you want to get more information from the administrator about what the likelihood of an easement is?
I mean, I think, to the point, if he puts the easement in the title, then it's a matter then for the town to either accept it or not accept it, but it stays in the, stays in the title, correct?
Yeah, so if the town doesn't, I didn't, I didn't realize that town meeting would need to accept that. But if, if, my take on that is, is if he granted something on the county records of an easement, the town, if the town needed to accept it at town meeting, then, um-
It's there.
It's there already, so it's just a matter of them accepting it.
Yeah, I just want to know, I mean, what, what's the level of appetite from the town? I mean, is it something that's just been something that they've been talking about doing for a decade and have no intentions of moving forward on, or is it something they actually need?
Yeah, I have no idea.
Well, to be honest, this is an opportunity, the town doesn't want to let slip away, because they need to access that and repair it.
Yeah.
Right.
I was just saying, this is town government, that opportunity, it's not always a fact, it sometimes is, but not always a fact.
They don't want it to slip away.
But we may also need a little legal advice regarding how that, we would write the easement in the deed and how the town would accept that, so if you let us regroup and talk to our attorney.
Yeah, Mary, how much time do we have on this petition? Do you already have counsel?
I do have, yeah.
Who's your attorney?
Mike Malas, Spencer.
Yeah.
We have to December eighth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Didn't package yet, there's a letter from the town manager.
Right, yeah. So you would have Mike draw up an easement, or the town council would draw up an easement, or whatever?
Yeah.
I just don't know-
We're not, we weren't gonna do that until we resolved this issue. Because if I have to move the house back, it actually comes, if I move the back, house back over here, it's gonna interfere with the-
Right, right. Yeah. I don't know how serious, you know, you said it, if you've been talking to three town administrators over the past thirty, twenty years or so, none of them have done anything on this, so how serious is the town about moving forward with this? And what kind of consideration do we need to consider it at all? I don't really answer to that right now. And I think the rest of the board- And I think the rest of the board would probably want an answer to that as well.
Yeah, cause that seems, that's an important part of the puzzle.
I mean, I want I want that answer, but it seems that there is, it is in the town's interest with the repairs needing to happen.
If the town isn't interested in it, then.
Then he doesn't have to be on that side of the easement.
Yeah, it might change the location of the property. If the town's like, yeah, this would be great, but we don't really care one way or the other. Or if the town's like, yeah, we really need this to fix the dam and maintain it over the, you know, the next thirty years or so. Then it would probably, you know, that might be a factor on how we decide whether we're gonna grant this or not, you know? Cause right now, that is in within, totally within the two hundred feet sec, you know, buffer zone. But maybe if he doesn't have to do the thing, maybe he doesn't need to be all in the two hundred foot buffer zone, maybe it's a different spot. Maybe we wanna grant him or not grant him in a different spot if that's the case. So do you wanna continue this? When's the, when's the next time we have a meeting?
And now you have another application coming in, so it would probably be a date next week.
Yeah, it might continue with like four weeks or something like that? Give them time and give this application time to come in.
Seventeenth now?
Well, it has to be, um, we have to move on it by December.
First.
First?
Be the week before Thanksgiving.
So you're you're the middle of October now, you'd be the middle of November, just before Thanksgiving, sort of before Thanksgiving. Well, I'm in town for Thanksgiving.
I might not be though, that's the thing.
Yeah, we're doing it the week before, that should give plenty of time, right?
Yeah, I just, let me, I have to find out, um. So when's Thanksgiving, they said the twenty third?
Yeah.
Um. So you're talking about November fourteenth, maybe?
Yeah.
How about November, if we do November?
Seventh.
The seventh?
Seventh is the all boards meeting.
You can't do the seventh in election day.
Election day.
Yeah, it's not a natural election, we don't have an election this year.
There's no elections at all on the seventh this year?
Not this year, next year. So this year, they have the all boards meeting that everybody was invited to.
No, that's right, I was going to that.
Are you going to that?
Oh, God, no.
I don't, I don't, I don't really care about that, going to that one way or the other, it doesn't make a difference to us.
Alright, so it's up to you, I can book it up here, cause that one's downstairs.
There's one downstairs?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, how's the seventh for you, Marco?
That works.
That works for you, November seventh?
Yeah.
It's not Pearl Harbor Day either, so it's a good thing, that's December seventh.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, so that, would that work for you? No, November seventh? I'd wanna find out from the administrator first on like what they're actually wanna do.
And I'd just like to say, you know, what what we're trying to do here is not detrimental at all to the neighborhood.
No, I don't think.
I'm I'm eighty-five, my wife is eighty-four.
Yeah.
We've been wanting to build down there for many years, and we're only getting to the point that we can.
Right, right, well, I don't wanna, I mean, that's what I'm saying is I don't.
Gonna be able to get the foundation, if we're gonna keep postponing this. I've been putting up with this all summer, with different boards and people on vacation and and.
Yeah, I I have no control over that, so, I mean, if the board decides that they want more information, I know I want more information. You you know, you build a house there, that's gonna be there when you're gone and I'm gone and we're all gone. Um, and we just wanna make sure that, uh, that, um, you know, if it's gonna be okay or not. And and like I said, is is that if the board, all of us went together, want a little more information, it's a couple of weeks. And if you look at this for like ten years, it's only a couple more weeks. Alright, so motion to continue to November seventh on this?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Eric, Garrett makes the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we'll continue this till the till November seventh. Um, does anyone wanna go to the property and look at the property?
I'd be glad to, I'd be glad to meet anybody down there.
Okay. So if they do, they can contact either one of you to make arrangements if you guys wanna see it.
Okay, yeah, that works.
Yeah. Alright, so is anybody, well, we'll see in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary, um, we'll need to, I don't know whether or not we wanna have Andrew send us something or. See what he wants to do.
See if he can be here too.
Yeah, I mean, even if, you know. Right, but he doesn't necessarily have to be at that meeting necessarily.
I'll talk to him, have him chat on us.
But say, yeah, just, you know, even if you want, you know.
Just a few more details, I think, you know, if the town intend to act on this, how quickly, if there's dam repairs, how timely?
Right.
If there's any other departments that are involved.
Easement that are we actually looking at? Like, how far away is the easement? Like, what kind of conditions that there would be on an easement?
To to clarify, the only way to that easement is through this way that's not even recognized by the town.
Right now, yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have something official that we then can't access through something else that's not. Well, that's one one piece of the puzzle at a time.
Accepted way, there's a statute that says that a town has the right to maintain and, you know, plow it or whatever. Without any kind of li- liability, I can't remember what chapter it is. Cause Nantucket has this problem, that like two thirds of Nantucket are private roads and ways.
Really?
No, yeah, like it's a big problem in Nantucket.
But he's been very generous to allow the.
Next applicant?
Yeah, so we can't really have, continue to have a meeting on that, yeah. Um, thirty-four Hill Road? You guys made it. So, uh, you guys wanna state your name for the record, please?
Justin Raymond, thirty-four Hill Road.
Yeah, and you are.
Arthur Bro, father-in-law of the culprit that built the shed.
So, so, yeah, I I happened to see that, so you guys, um, you're asking for forgiveness rather than permission at this point?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
We were under the, the boundary line, it was a discrepancy of where we thought it was. And then we found out from Kurt where it really is, and from the survey.
Are are you encroaching on the neighbor on this property?
No.
On this shed?
On its property.
We're not on its property.
How far off through the property line are you?
Uh, right now, we're.
Five and a half.
No, six feet, six feet now, the survey shows only, we're only six inches. But we moved the shed forward.
We've we've.
We've moved it since the survey, I, there's pictures there, I'll show you.
So you're, what is this, what are you proposing this to be?
It's just, it's it's a pool.
Shed for the pool stuff.
Shed for the pool, for storage in the off season and people can change it whatever they want.
There's nothing finished in it.
Yeah, it's all. They all the same?
We're asking for nine feet of relief, I guess, it's fifteen feet, we have six feet.
This is the before and after?
Yeah. Yeah, that was before we did it, we just did that, in fact, last week, when we got the survey back, we realized how how close we really were. So we pushed it as far forward as we can, we're at the cement skirt for the pool now.
Yeah. So, does that fence on the property line?
No.
No.
No. Fence is off the property.
So why are you putting it on that side versus someplace else in the yard?
Because the other side of the yard, um, we have a, we have a hockey rink that goes up every winter. Takes up that whole area between the barn and the and the pool. So to put it there, you couldn't put up the hockey rink, plus we wanted it accessible to the pool. So if you come out of the pool and you need to change or go in there, you can change.
Is the pool, is the pool area completely fenced in right now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You can see the fence coming down through the shed on both sides.
So you removed the fence to put this in?
No.
No, they built it right there and then once the shed.
They left an opening for us.
Opening for us, we will be attaching the fence to the shed. To close that little six inch, six inch gap.
Yeah. Pool is brand new.
Pool and then last fall, um, with with the the, this spring, the fence got finished, got put in. Was the shed part of the the pool, the part we called to do the pool?
No. No, technically, you don't need a permit for that shed, because it's under a hundred square feet, you don't need a building permit. So, you know, I guess we went ahead and.
How big is the shed?
Eight by twelve. Ninety-six square feet. But we didn't have the setback.
Yeah. How did we, how did this come to our attention?
Um, I think.
Someone drove by and saw it.
Yeah, Kurt, I think Kurt can address that.
Do you guys have any question, Eric, Mar? No.
Any issues with the neighbors on that side?
Uh, only butter on that side, Burke Albright, thirty-two Hill Road, it's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, do you wanna call the zoning enforcement officer?
Yeah.
Take your shit.
Mr. Meska.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'm gonna pass out the usual things, Mr. Bro, do you have another copy of that survey?
Yeah, well, you didn't get that?
Oh. So, Mr. Chairman, my local inspector, William Fenner, was making rounds and on his normal inspection rounds. And noticed the construction of the shed, Mr. Bro, I always screw that up.
Bro.
Bro.
You got it right.
Okay, well, I was gonna say Boral tonight, Bro, um, is a licensed construction supervisor, he's correct. A shed less than two hundred square feet does not require a building permit under the building code. However, the building code says it does not absolve you from any other regulation, which is the zoning regulation. That speaks to setbacks for all structures, and we have no like, um, exception for small structures. So as you can see, um, actually, a very rectangular, almost rectangular, nice lot. It's got a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage and sixty thousand, it might be a little less, because this is a, this is, it's just, it's this is a R forty zone.
Yeah, I think it is less.
I think it's a hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
Forty?
It's a hundred, it's a hundred and forty-five across the front, two seventy-five deep.
Okay, so that's interesting, so it's in an R forty zone, it's different. It it is, it it backs up to some other property. Um, picture the house, the garage, all properly permitted, page two. Uh, a distant picture of the shed and a blown-up picture of the shed. Um, picture thirty-two Hill Road and, uh, the neighbor who who spoke here. And there is a tree line there. Um, they did get a pool permit in twenty twenty-two, they erected the pool. They provided the the, uh, uh, plot plan here showing that the pool was gonna be twenty feet off the property line. And when they provided us in the shed application, um, for fifteen feet off the property line. We're not surveyors, we just sort of go by what we can see, and we knew it was a little squishy. So, um, you know, we couldn't grant the building permit. Um, I see that, you know, Mr. Bro has provided and, uh, registered land surveyor, I know this gentleman here. And, yeah, he's he's right up on the line there. So, our instincts were right, um, and I, and just this evening, um, he presented, uh, these before and after photos. Of them moving the shed forward, so, um, it is certainly less intrusive into the setback. Um, you know, based on his survey plan and that he says that they've moved it forward approximately six feet, I, you know, go.
Five and a half, five and a half, we have six feet now.
Right, right, so you have six feet, uh, setback when you're required fifteen, so we would need nine feet of relief. Plus or minus. Unfortunate, you know, always try and ask that we had these problems off before they happen. And ask the applicant, you know, to comply in all cases, the smaller lots along the lakes is is always difficult. This is, you know, more typical of the lots we have now, it's much newer lot, the house is about five years old or so. We're getting old. So that's what I have.
So the shed is within the fence around the pool?
Yes, that's what, that's what he said.
And the pool is twenty feet off of the.
The 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 actual pool is, it's up, it's twen- is twenty feet, so you have the the concrete.
Yeah.
Skirt around it, you know.
Four feet of concrete on outside.
So there's six, so the edge of that is sixteen, how, and the, the shed's what, eight by twelve?
Yeah.
So another twelve.
And that would have been fifteen feet off the.
Fifteen feet side setback, so he says there, there's six feet off of the line. Marco, you have any questions or anything? Eric, Garrett? Any con, any thoughts, comments?
Um, your listed hardship on this, was it be too difficult to move?
Very difficult to move now, we, just to push it forward, um, was difficult enough. And if we wanna keep it close to the pool, backside of the pool, it it drops right off, cause they had it greated up, it's probably.
The back of the pool grates down?
There's four, there's almost, there's four to five feet of pitch from the back of the house to the back of the lot.
Right.
What about from the pool behind the pool?
Behind the pool, it drops down.
Drops off.
How how much of a drop are you talking about?
Probably, probably four to five feet. So what would happen is if we put the shed up closer to the pool there.
Yeah.
The be- the back of the shed would be this high off the ground.
Okay, okay.
And like I say, on the other side is a, you know, we, they do a skating rink for my grandson every year.
That's where all the fill from the pool.
Yeah, and between the, if you look between the the deck and the house, the deck and the pool, there's not enough room to put the shed in there.
Say, instead of your son playing hockey, does wrestling? Lot less room.
He's a gentle giant.
It's actually not even hockey, it's just, you know, recreational, yeah, but it's it's forty by sixty.
Oh, so it's a good size, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And it pretty much takes up that whole area between the barn and where the pool, where you see the pool.
So obviously, if you you can't put it in the back, so even if he hadn't built it, the back is gonna be out.
Right.
So the only question is, is that how much does the skating rink make a, is a factor? For 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 this, I don't, if it's up against the pool, if it's up against that skirt and it's at least six feet from the line. Uh, I don't really have a problem with it at all, and if it was clipped right up from the line, I think I'd have a bigger problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it's inside the fence.
Yeah.
You you could, you could see from the survey, we only had six inches.
Yeah, that I would have, I would have, yeah, I would have said no to that.
Yeah, and and I don't blame you.
Yeah.
That's why I had had a friend of mine come down last week with a tractor and some forks, and he was barely able to pick up the back. It, to move that shed, I'd need a crane.
And the neighbor does have no problem with it on that side, which that's a factor in my opinion.
There's a tree buffer there too, yeah, between him and the shed, so.
Tree buffer fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, alright, let me call the other boards, so, um, anyone from the selectmen's office, town clerk? Uh, collector's office, assessors, border health, conservation, planning board, you've already heard from the building. We've already heard from the building inspectors' office, economic development, senior center, place, fire, education, you see any of the school department, any of the boards? Anybody else have any comments or objections, member of the public, abotters, we've already heard from one of the abotters? Nobody, anybody else wanna have any more questions for the petitioner or for anybody else, any of you guys?
Yeah, one quick question, just to clarify things here, cause you got a couple different numbers that we've been talking about. You're six feet right now from the back of the shed to the property line?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're looking for nine.
So we're nine foot.
So we need nine feet of relief.
And that's on what, the northerly side of the property?
Yeah.
It's on the northerly side.
Yeah, would you? Well, would you close?
Yeah, it would be facing north towards Spencer, that would be north, right?
The size of the shed is part of.
Towards Route twenty would be north, I think.
No, because if it gets bigger, then they have to, yeah.
Yeah, twenty runs east-west and twenty runs parallel with the line.
Right, so if, if they decided they were gonna double the size of the shed, they would still need to be at least six feet from that property, I don't think that would necessarily.
Yeah, the shed, shed's not gonna get any bigger.
They could change that shed, so they could, if he say wanted to put like a hundred and fifty foot square shed in there versus.
Right, as long as, yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of that, then he would have to go to court at that point and get a permit for it, and that's according to whatever the state building code is.
Yeah.
They would still need to abide by our variance, so they would still need, so if we granted a variance for six feet off of the line, regardless of what kind of size shed is there, it needs to be at least six feet off the line.
Six feet off the line, yeah.
So, and that's, you know, forever on the property.
Yep.
Alright, you guys ready to move on this?
Yeah, so someone wanted to end the public portion of this petition?
I'll make a motion.
Garrett makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, so is anyone, um, is there any discussion at all? Like I said, is, I, if it's six feet off the line, typically I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah.
Um.
No, I don't have an issue.
You can't really do anything in the back because of the topography, the slope goes down, um, do we really want to interfere with Disney on Ice on Hill Road in the winter times?
I'd like the ticket to go see.
Well, at the Christmas party.
Um, I don't think this board wants to do that at all.
No.
So, um, yeah, so I'm fine with it, I don't know how you guys feel about it, I would, I'm good with it if I, if we saw make some motions.
Yeah, I'm ready to move.
Yeah, you guys are okay with it, you think?
Okay, well, I'll motion to grant the variance, um, for nine feet from what, uh, determined here to be the east side setback.
In the east?
That's what I'm looking at on this here.
Really?
Yeah, for the front of the houses itself, cause the solar panel companies all wanna go on the front of our houses, cause it's the sudden.
It's east side?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna say nine feet from the east side.
Cause the road kinda curves.
Setback.
Hey, you have the cut, you have the compass there.
Archets being the, uh, rear cost, cost to relocate, also the, uh, the slope coming off the backside, there's not really a good other place to put it on this. Uh, it's not detrimental, obviously, we've got the neighbor here on that side claiming that he doesn't have any issues with it, so.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, twenty day appeal period, you need to record the variance once it's done, um, and then, I mean, you don't need a building permit or anything like that. Uh, you might, I don't know if you need tornado stakes on that either. The winds blow now in Charleston, what I'm told.
Thank you.
Um, okay, good luck.
Thank you.
And when you, when you record the variance, you're gonna record the whole document, not just part of it.
Yeah.
Alright?
You're glad it happened, they recorded the first page, it's like, okay, great.
Um, okay, gentlemen, thank you.
And that, that'll, Mary, will that be mailed to me or?
I'll send you a copy of it in the mail.
Yeah.
With the date that I submitted to the town clerk, you should take me a day or two after, and then you'll wait the twenty days, come and pick up the exact thing that I'm sending you.
Okay.
And then get that recorded.
At the registry deeds in Wester.
Okay, yeah.
And then you have to bring a copy back in order for it.
That's the worst part of the whole thing.
Yeah.
Going to the registry deeds.
It's not so bad anymore.
Yeah, but it's still parking.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Front street.
Yeah. That's the hardest part.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Alright, so now we have, um, the only old business we have is the minutes, Mary?
Yeah.
So we have the me, uh, minutes from the last meeting? Does anyone have comments on that?
No, I took a look at them, signed.
Everything looks good, is there a motion on the minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second for Marco, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
It's motion carries, any other, um, any other items not on the agenda for the evening, Mary, or?
No.
Alright, so we'll see you guys on November seventh, uh, for continuation, and then we'll get information from the town administrator in the meantime. And if you guys wanna s- if you actually wanna go out to that property and take a look at it, uh, maybe contact Mary, take, contact Arthur and, and go and look at the property or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, that's not really a question for me, it's just.
It's up to you guys.
Question of the condition though.
The only thing is, is that you can't have more than three of us there at one time, cause otherwise it's a meeting.
We can't talk, yeah.
Right, so, um, so if there's gonna be three of us there at the same time to look at the property, it's considered a public meeting and we have to post it, uh, at least two days beforehand, so. Uh, and that counts for anything, so if we're going to, like, that all board meeting, if there's gonna be three of us at that meeting, that's considered as only board meeting, we have to post it.
Okay, so if I see two of you guys in a restaurant, I gotta go to the next restaurant?
No, it's like, as long as we're not target zoning, everything's good.
Oh, okay.
Say Treehouse at about? Eight o'clock on Friday?
We can post a meeting to another location, it doesn't have to be in this.
Doesn't have to be here?
Yeah, it can be a treehouse.
Why would we go look at their sign?
Yeah. Were you, you weren't on the board when we did that, right?
No, I wasn't.
You were on the board though. I, I wasn't initially for that, and then I think both you and Jason were like, if you traveled down, can you see that sign, and I'm like, you know what, they're right. And, uh, you know, you're going down Route twenty, then you're going fifty-five, sixty miles an hour, you, you, those small signs, you can't see them.
They just had two fatalities right there, right in front of us.
Yeah, yeah, already?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, motion to adjourn?
A second.
Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that was.